Good morning. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole for September 12th. We are going to get started today. Commissioners, we have a couple of things on the top of Cow. The first one, we have some introductions to make, both from our City Manager and from Stacy Stout. So I will turn to our City Manager to make some introductions of some new hires we have joining our team here at City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. DeLonge will start us off with a couple of positions in the Executive Office.
Thank you, Mayor and Manager. I'd like to start with Allison Sutter. Allison Sutter is our new Sustainability Manager, started yesterday, is already hard at work on the job. She comes to us from Spartan Nash where she was Manager of Corporate Responsibility, which is a really, and she has a really great background in sustainability and in our community. So I want to welcome her here. She's going to be awesome for us, and I'm really happy to have the help. And so I don't know if you'd like to say a few words, but no?
Because I'm very excited to be working with all of you in the city and thankful for the opportunity.
Yep. So then we'll introduce you individually, but this is your one big chance to say hi. So, thank you. All right. Next, Legislative Manager. So our legislative, new Legislative Manager is Corinne Ferick, and she is, comes to us from the state of Michigan where she has had responsible positions, Chief of Staff, Legislative Manager, and she's also worked in the Senate as a Policy Director and for the District, the Federal District Court, right?
The U.S. Attorney's Office here.
U.S. Attorney's Office here in Grand Rapids. So she is well-versed as a Policy Analyst and as a Legislative Manager. She will instantly increase our ability to have an impact, and I'm very happy to welcome Corinne to our staff.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Stacy?
Actually, you have another person that you wanted to...
Mr. Omati.
We have lots of new faces around City Hall, colleagues.
Following on Eric's announcement...
I was going to say, so with those of you who are surprised, Tom's going to introduce the individual who many of you know is replacing John Cousy.
Yes, and so we did a search and interview many candidates, and I'm here to inform you that Travis Scott was selected for the position. He is, you know, I know that he won't agree to that, but I would say that he is very technical, to the point that he is as technical as John Cousy even more. He come with a lot of knowledge and history of work related to the work that will be done here, and we're excited to have him here. Do you want to make a comment?
The folks in the control room would yell at me if I did not use the microphone.
He learns quickly.
It's a pleasure to be here, and I am excited to start and work with you all and build relationships. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you. All right, next we'll bring up Stacy Stout.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm very excited to introduce the Neighborhood Connector staff. Just a reminder, this is funded by the WK Calog Foundation, and we're going to do some incredible work in the neighborhoods quickly. First, I'd like to introduce Jordan Eaton. I know you've already started, but no, come see. Started a trend. Jordan Eaton is the Lead Neighborhood Connector, so he's the supervisor and really pulled together just an amazing onboard. Right here. You know him from the Housing Advisory Committee, Grand Rapidian, so we're really excited to hire a local neighbor of ours, and is just doing already a tremendous job. So welcome officially, officially, to the team. Next, we'll have Brian Blakely. Mr. Blakely is a longtime Grand Rapidian, so we're really excited. He's been on countless committees with the City of Grand Rapids, so we already thank him for his service before he started yesterday, with really strong ties to the neighborhoods and community, which is just critical for this work to move forwards because it's about relationships. So I'm just thrilled over the moon to have Mr. Blakely. So welcome, Mr. Blakely. Brian. Next, we have Sonia Riley. She has had her entire career in Grand Rapids servicing, working with families, our beloved families and residents, most recently with Strong Beginning where she worked really innovatively and just really with her whole heart, working with families to reduce infant mortality in the African-American and Latino community. Really knows the neighborhoods, done a lot of house visits, gotten to know families, and just really understands a lot of what we're doing with the structural, dismantling structural racism as well. So we're delighted to have you to our team. Welcome, Sonia.
Welcome.
Last but not least is Ms. Delaney Yancy. She graduated top of her class at Ottawa Hills High School, so go GRPS. You get a separate clap for that. We're fans of the public schools. She most recently graduated from MSU. She was a Vice President of the Student Urban Planning Association.
Awesome.
So brings a lot of passion around that. Yeah, I know, she's a Spartan too. Yeah, you have some fans, Spartan fans. And she also interned with us twice with the Planning Department, and she is part of the lead program, which you know with our community's children, so she was a graduate of that. So it's really exciting that she's kind of, she grew up in Grand Rapids, and she's back to serve, and she has a big heart for community and smart, so we're excited.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
So we just thank you for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to say, I know my colleagues probably have a lot of excitement and words of welcome for you all as well, but I want to say, welcome, it is so good to have you on our team, especially working in this really critical program that Stacy has really led since it's really, you had the idea, and it's been your baby ever since. So it's really aligned with a lot of our priorities and the work that we're doing, and we're really excited to work with you. And then Stacy, I'm assuming that you'll, after you all find your feet and get grounded a little bit, you can provide an update to the Commission, maybe in a couple, a month or two, on kind of the plan and what you'll be working on, and then what we can do to be supportive of your work.
Absolutely. Jordan's done an excellent job to really expedite the learning, get their feet under them quickly, so we can get out in community before the snow flies. And so I hope to have a really good update with you, for you.
Thank you. Awesome. All right, and then we also have an exciting announcement by our Chief of our Fire Department. Chief Lehman, you want to come up and tell us about this grant that you received?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We were successful again this year at a FPNS grant through Assistance for Firefighter Safety. It's a FEMA program, and we were awarded $347,000 to add to our RSP program, which has been, we've been successful at four out of five grant writing cycles to the tune of just less than a million dollars. So a very, very big shout-out to my team and to their ability to continue to have great success and to add to the safety and now our installation of carbon monoxide detectors to go along with our smoke detector program, which will definitely serve our community very well. Thank you.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. And if people want that, they can call 311, correct? So if you're interested in having the Fire Department come out, and if you're interested in getting a carbon monoxide detector, please call 311. All right, and then one just final, oh, I'm sorry, City Manager.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out maybe the obvious, that this is really a good program to advance the city's equity goals. You may recall that when this program originally started under Chief Knapp, it was focused in the neighborhoods that had the highest incidence of fire, and coincidentally, those were in some of the poorest neighborhoods in the city, and the neighborhoods predominantly living there were people of color. So we have made significant investments. I believe 6,000 homes have been addressed.
Over 7,000.
Over 7,000 at this point. And to have an infusion of carbon monoxide detectors, which is another significant issue for our residents, and be able to serve those communities that are most in need, I think, is really fulfilling of the city's values here.
Yeah, question?
Thanks, go ahead.
So if someone's already gotten the residential fire alarm, are they, can they call and get the additional piece for the carbon monoxide?
Yes, they can. They're in the process of creating that program, now that we've got them there, and how we're going to go ahead and rebuild those installations.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Commissioners, just one other update, and this is more, I think, for the public, because I know many of you are tracking with me on this, but I just wanted to give a quick update about where we are with the City Manager search. So RFPs went out, that process is still open, so we're hoping to have proposals from potential search firms by the end of this week. And then two of our colleagues around this table will join me in working with Mary Beth and Amy from Procurement to review those proposals and make a recommendation. I think the one change from what we talked about last time when we were around this table is that we'll hold off on doing the robust community input about the community, about the candidate profile and getting that information from the community. We'll wait to do that until after we have a search firm in place, and we'll make sure that that includes an opportunity for input from all of our city staff, departments, as well as community members, business community, and so we'll make sure that that's real robust. I think we can learn a lot from the process that the county just went through as they've collected community input, as they secure their community profile for their executive search as well. And so we are, again, it's kind of the quiet stages behind the scenes, but we are moving forward on that, and I want to thank Commissioner O'Connor and Commissioner Lanier, who are willing to step up and work with me and Mary Beth and Amy to review those. So just want to let you all know that. So let's get to our agenda, a couple of things. We have six action items, Commissioners, and then we have two executive sessions that we'll go into right after Committee of the Whole. We have one that is related to pending litigation and another one to review an appointed official's performance and performance objectives. So I'll ask for that vote after we get through our six items. So we'll get started with our very first resolution today, and this is a resolution approving the request from Milk and Honey LLC for a redevelopment liquor license to be located at 95 Monroe Center Northwest. Can I get a motion?
To move.
All right. Hello?
Good morning. On August 11th, 2017, Milk and Honey LLC submitted an application for a redevelopment liquor license. This is to be issued at 95 Monroe Center Northwest. The application has been approved by the required city departments and will be presented to the DDA Board at their meeting tomorrow morning. Approval of this application by City Commission will be contingent upon the approval of the DDA Board as well.
And the DDA meets tomorrow?
They meet tomorrow morning.
All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution to approve the request for a temporary authorization from Canal Street Brewing, which is Founder's, for the Founder's Brewing Company 20th Anniversary Party, which will be held on October 14th.
To move. To report.
All right.
All right, so this one was received on August 2nd, 2017, from Canal Street Brewing Company. They submitted an application for a temporary liquor license to be issued in conjunction with their Founder's Brewing Company 20th Anniversary Party. It's going to be held on October 14th. The application has been reviewed by the required city departments and is being recommended for approval.
All right, Commissioners, any questions about that? Happy anniversary to Founder's?
Yeah.
Yeah, 20 years, that's great. We're happy to have him in our city. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution scheduling a public hearing to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 61 of the City Code, recommended for the Granville Avenue area-specific plan. Can I get a motion?
To move. To report.
All right, Suzanne, you want to tell us about this, although I think we're all really quite familiar with this. We supported the ASP. We've talked about it around this table a number of times. I think we've all had a chance to read the kind of lengthy resolution, but this is just to set the public hearing for October 10th, right?
This is just to set the public hearing. On April 25th, you adopted the Granville ASP, and the implementation, we wanted to target certain items. We met with Neighborhood Association consultants and reviewed the number of implementation strategies that were included in it and developed an action plan. Some of that is zoning-related and some of it's not. So for example, we've been meeting with the Neighborhood Association Habitat Hispanic Center, looking at private market strategies to avoid displacement, for example, kind of the lending environment, working with the fifth third bank and doing lending education in the neighborhood, and also looking at an education program that Home Repair Services has created to talk about with homeowners, when you get that postcard in the mail from the investor, what do you do? And so we're working on a training program for the neighborhood that will educate residents. So again, the displacement, trying to look in the private market as well as what we can do through zoning. So as far as zoning goes, one of the key recommendations was to allow flexible ground floor uses in the TBA Zone District, which would open it up not to only retail on the ground floor, but office and residential as well. We are proposing that amendment. We do think there's applicability here too, as we've said before, for other zone, or for other business districts. This amendment right now is only pertaining to Granville, but we actually, this morning, Landon is over at Wealthy Street Business Alliance, talking with them, because they identified certain areas where they wanted retail only, but then also opportunities for ground floor retail, or ground floor office and residential. So he's talking to them. We're also presenting to the Neighborhood Business Alliance on October 18th, talking about other areas where other business districts might be interested in a similar approach. That will come back to you later on as a separate zoning amendment. The other, the other two, one has to do with multifamily residential. The request from the ASP was to prohibit multifamily residential dwellings in the TN Low Density Residential Zone District within the ASP boundary. Staff prepared for the Planning Commission three alternatives. The one that was recommended by the Planning Commission was to amend the zoning ordinance to prohibit the development of multifamily dwellings within the boundaries of the Granville ASP, but also under consideration, we provided Alternative B, which was looking at the scale of the potential development should it occur for multifamily, so that it would maintain a similar character to the single-family homes, but you could fit additional units in the block. And some of that led to other discussions about, are you going to allow the division of existing units and things like that? So we wanted to encourage with that alternative if there was new construction. The third alternative that we offered to the Planning Commission was to wait, based on the City Commission's discussion on August 7th regarding the primary recommendations from the Housing Advisory Committee and the creation of the new Housing Advisory Committee, and whether or not further examination of that topic was warranted, given that this could have other policy implications for other parts of the city. The Planning Commission, as I mentioned, did recommend Alternative A with just prohibiting multifamily structures in the LDR for this, for your consideration. And then finally, the third ASP recommendation for off-street parking lots. Off-street parking lots as a primary use is a special land use in the LDR. We see that oftentimes with churches or businesses. This would prohibit off-street parking lots from going into the LDR Zone District. And as you mentioned, this is a public hearing, so that would be scheduled for August 10th.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions about this? Commissioners?
Yeah, just, just one. I think it's good to hear that we're open to that first change, which is allowing office and residential on the first floor. I think we've seen even things get built new that stayed vacant for that time period. In fact, sometimes developers put in their pro forma that they won't rent that because it just, the market just isn't there for it. So I think being cognizant of changing that is going to be key for us to not have vacancies on the first floor, but I think that also kind of gets to, you know, your point three. I think that as you create more of that other use, there's going to be more of a parking concern that will, that will be there. So I think that's not necessarily, I think here you're saying you can go back and that parking hold line gets moved. Is that what I'm looking at here? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what three is. Is that...
Parking is, yeah, parking would still be allowed in the TBA, but we do, so the ASP establishes a parking hold line so that commercial parking does not extend beyond the Granville Alley or beyond the existing lot depths of lots running along Granville Avenue. So it does keep it more constrained adjacent to the business district than kind of going further back and demolishing homes. We do allow by special land use currently, like, let's say you had an office building and the adjacent property is zoned residential, but it's in conjunction with that office use. We have allowed, even on a separate lot, the expansion of parking. So this would prohibit that.
Okay. Yeah, because I just think like, it seems to be that the theory to allow the office use will hopefully help some of that parking stresses between night and day, because those users are usually opposite. But, but you know, overall, I just think our next, you know, collision with these two is that we're going to see as more of this first floor gets leased up, there's already parking concerns in almost all the neighborhood business districts there. So I just want to be mindful, I think, beyond, beyond what we're looking to plan, but also for parking services, and how do we kind of create that ability to flex that where we're not over-parking all of our neighborhood streets, because everyone's still driving.
Yeah, I think trying to smooth out the residential office and retail and restaurant uses is something that we've been careful to. I know in some of the larger projects that we've approved, for instance, the one at Fulton and Carlton, even where Brive Vivant is, limiting the number of restaurants and encouraging retailer office in conjunction with it, so it's now all restaurant, has been a strategy that the Planning Commission has used.
Thanks.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I just wanted to say that at the first listening tour that we had at Senior Neighbors, this issue about first-floor residential came up as desirable, particularly for seniors and those with handicaps. So I think that, you know, this is a good option to include for people now that we are looking at this demographic change.
Thanks. So Suzanne, I know this is just setting the public hearing, but in reading through the packet, it sounds to me like the neighborhood is supportive of Option A.
Yes.
And then that's what the Planning Commission is recommending.
Yes.
And then I'm curious, I mean, it's a little unusual for us to have a resolution that includes other alternatives that the Planning Commission didn't support. So can you fill me in on why that's included?
I think we just wanted to, again, I think from a Planning Department standpoint, believe it's an important policy issue, and so we can take that off if that's not, I mean, the resolution has those options, and we do actually give the Planning Commission options multiple times in their resolutions. So it's not untypical of us to include options in resolutions, it's just not something the City Commission normally sees.
Yeah, it seemed, it just seemed unusual to me, especially after reading the minutes from the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think for us, Dr. Braim's comments in the minutes were interesting and I think do provide some, some different context, and so that was part of in the minutes that we kind of debated on how to provide that information to the Commission.
Commissioner?
Yeah, a couple of things, I'll speak to the, point about the options in a second, but I completely support what Commissioner Shaver said about allowing office, main-floor office in our TBA districts. I mean, as a city that has seen a lot of growth, we still have a lot of vacancy in a lot of our business districts, and so I think it's important that we get to full before we get to, hey, I wish we had this here. Because occupied buildings, regardless of the ultimate intended use or ultimate final use is what we want it to be, we can want a lot of things, but to get people occupying spaces to fill in the missing teeth in our neighborhood business districts, I think is a more important goal than trying to mandate what ultimate end-use is oftentimes. So I think this is a good first step in implementing that in some neighborhoods, and I'd like to see this filter into other neighborhood business districts around the city, because I do think, you know, active office use during the daytime can bring vibrancy to a, to a business district. As for the alternatives, I mean, I'm still struggling with this. I know that's what the Planning Department recommended. I mean, Commissioner Shaver and I met with the neighbors at Granville Avenue and discussed this multiple times. In fact, at the last meeting, I think the reason Alternative B is on here is because we had a lengthy conversation with the folks around, you know, around the table at Granville regarding the intent of wanting to not have high-density multifamily development in the TBA District. And so there's this, I think there was a fear amongst the neighborhood that people were going to come in, buy up six buildings, six houses, tear them down, and put up a large multifamily development. And so I think the, the goal and intent of Alternative A, which was approved, is a way to stop that from happening, but I think there's other tools in our zoning code that cannot, I think this, I think Alternative A creates a really bad precedent for a lot of neighborhoods to say, we don't want that here. We don't want those people here. We don't want multifamily. And as we discuss affordable housing, and we discuss housing in general in our city, affordable, multifamily housing in two-to-four unit capacity is something that's not currently being constructed. And so by saying we no longer want to use this as a tool in our toolbox to provide housing options for our residents, it sets a really terrible precedent. And it's, and we know that there's only two light tech projects awarded each cycle, for the most part, in the City of Grand Rapids. And so if we're going to continue to build affordable housing, it's not all going to be 40, 60, and 80-unit projects. We have to find ways to let people build smaller projects. And so I think Alternative B was something that we actually discussed with the neighbors at Roosevelt Park, to say, your goal is to keep the character of your neighborhood, is to keep the scale smaller. And so by creating a building footprint maximum, if we have a form-based zoning code, and so Alternative A is a deviation from form-based zoning code. Form-based zoning code says if it looks like a house, if it's the scale of the neighborhood, I don't care if it has one unit, two units, or five units in it, it's still, it looks like what everything else that looks here. And so by using the 150%, which was, I think, the Planning Department came up with, to say, if it, if it fits the scale of the neighborhood and it looks like a house and it can be built as a multifamily, but doesn't change the way that the street looks or functions, we should encourage that. Because again, I think a lot of the residents that live along the Granville Avenue Quarter, in which the family structure works there, oftentimes there are multiple families living in one house. And so if we can create a duplex unit where two families can essentially live side-by-side to each other, it's no different than the neighborhood functions today. And so I'm still incredibly fearful of Alternative A as being something that's going to create a very bad precedent that suddenly we're going to take to another neighborhood in the city to say, we don't want any multifamily here. And at some point, every neighborhood can come to the, come to this body and say, we no longer want multifamily in our, in our neighborhood. We need multifamily in our neighborhood. We need small-scale, two-to-four unit development to be a practical and functional solution to addressing not just affordable housing, but just more housing in general. We need more units. We have a 2% vacancy rate in the City of Grand Rapids right now. We don't have enough places for people to live. And so by taking this alternative off the table, it creates just terrible precedent for the City of Grand Rapids.
All right. Commissioner?
So in that regard, two things. This is something, I echo Commissioner O'Connor's comments in that this is something that I've been pushing for at the Affordable Housing Table for a long time, is smaller projects actually, mission to coming up with funding for smaller projects. And so if, in this approval, what are we approving? Are we approving A, B, or C? Or are we just leaving it out there?
Well, today we're just setting a public hearing.
Right. No, no, I understand that. So I'm saying, when it comes for actual approval, I think we need to nail that down, because that's the...
It's confusing with all options.
It's how this, how this is written is very confusing, to be quite frank.
That's my point.
And it's, it's a deviation from what typically comes before us after a Planning Commission has, has gone through a pretty robust process and heard public comment and voted on something and made the recommendation. Typically, that is what comes to us. And so that, when I read it, I found it confusing because it had three alternatives.
And I appreciate the willingness of city staff to come back and revisit this based on neighbor concerns. Again, I applaud all that, but I'm saying, we just need to make sure when we, that we don't set a precedent that could have an unintended consequence that would be very negative.
And I don't know if every time we want to have all the different alternatives that the Planning Commission discusses brought forward to us as we look at alternatives. So again, this may be an outlier, but I also, I want to be mindful of that as well, because those Planning Commission decisions at times can be very contentious. And, you know, the, the role of the Planning Commission is to really think through, after a hearing, significant public comment, think through their decisions before they make a recommendation to this body.
I think where this might be a little bit unique to Commissioner O'Connor's point is that you've, as a body, the City Commission as a body, has been looking at the affordable housing issue much more extensively and had a more robust discussion and had a different perspective than the Planning Commission on that topic. So I think this is where that's, this is unique in that regard.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners, any other comments? And again, this is a set of public hearing. I anticipate we're going to hear from the neighborhood. They're going to come out on the 10th, I anticipate, since they've worked long and hard on this ASP and getting this to where it is today. But any other comments?
Well, I would just, you know, I know we're going to have to deal with this decision, but the larger issue is around what Commissioner O'Connor brought up, and I'd be very interested to learn what success you're having in terms of outreach, you know, and that Granville's having in terms of outreach with the third and with intervening, and you're getting these postcards and here's your alternatives. So there's that piece. And then I, too, I've looked at trends, because we've been talking about this for three years, and one of the surprising trends that happened during, even during the recession, is the multi-generational homes that were being built in the country were the only ones that did not take a hit. And I think there is a trend there that we need to at least learn more about. It's not just a cultural thing. I think that there is a shift in thinking about that, and it has to do with the demographics shift that's happening. People are living longer, and the fact that people are needing to live together, children and family, and adults, because they can't afford it. So, so I did find Dr. Braim's comments very interesting, and I think we do need to kind of push pause and think this through in some way, you know, and at the same time, I want to respect what Granville wants to do. So it's much more complex than we'd like to have it be, unfortunately.
Well, and, you know, we strongly encourage neighborhoods to do ASPs, and I think, you know, some ASPs, we adopt them, and then the development that occurs in that neighborhood isn't consistent with that ASP. And so trying to solidify their ASP in zoning, I think, is based on fear, and I, and we've seen that. So again, I get the delicate, the really delicate balance here, but I also understand the need to really be mindful of community saying, this is the vision we have for our community. And it's complicated, and I get that, and I know that there's good arguments on both sides that we need to weigh.
Well, and I respect the idea that we need to respect, but I think in this instance, this is, I think we're respecting what the community wants, it's using the right policy tool to accomplish the end goal. And I think that's what I'm struggling with on this, is that this suggestion for an alternative was brought so late in the game. In fact, the last time Commissioner Schaefer and I met with the neighborhood, we discussed it. We went to the Planning Department, I talked to Suzanne, I said, is this a possibility? Can we look at how we might be able to use a different policy tool to accomplish the same end game, which the neighborhood expressed comfort in, in knowing that they did, in what they intend, they want the streetscape to look like at the end. But then it just goes to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission says, well, that's, you know, they don't know the whole conversation, the continuum of conversation that has gone on, and the engagement process that happened, it's never been taken back to the neighborhood to discuss to say, will this satisfy what your intended outcome is? So it's up to us to have that discussion now, because that's the point in the process we're at. But again, be mindful that we use the right tool to solve the problem and still have the same outcome, so.
No, it's a good point. All right, any other final comments? All right, all those in favor of scheduling this public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution authorizing dispersment of GVSU's Bell Nat Property Pilot Funds to Noble.
So moved.
Support.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So today, what we request is that you authorize the payment of pilot funds to the Noble Neighborhood for projects that have been developed by the neighborhood and would be done under the pilot agreement that we have with GVSU as part of the IMOU. Does that work better now? I think I had my keyboard on your keyboard, so while you're scrolling back, and then mine quit. So what this would do is authorize a payment to Noble under the IMOU, which is the initial memorandum of understanding between Noble, GVSU, and the city of Grand Rapids. And so this is part of a three MOU arrangement that set up essentially a community benefit agreement, and you can see before you now the projects that Noble has selected for this first year. Today, at Fiscal Committee, you, the Fiscal Committee authorized a reappropriation of funds from last year, and they are here for your review and ready to go. This has been reviewed by the work group, and is also, the work group approved it and brings it here for your recommendation. So if there are any questions, I can answer those.
So, I know, I don't think so. We don't usually have neutering feral cats before us. I'm assuming they're going to work like with Sea Snip or something, probably.
I think they're going to ask for volunteers.
Clearly, it's a problem, and I have skunks in my neighborhood. Are there solutions for that?
I'd rather work with cats.
All right, Commissioners, I'll turn it to my colleagues from the Second Ward, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Kelly. I know we started working on this project when I was Commissioner still, and then both of you have really taken the lead and worked in partnership with the city and Grand Valley and the neighborhood to get us to where we are today. So Commissioner Kelly, do you want to make any comments, and then I'll turn to my colleague, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, we certainly hope to see more examples of community benefit agreements. This is one part, along with the affordable housing that Grand Valley will be building once they get their first building finished. So we're pleased to see this, and it's interesting to see what they come up with. Question, how many years will they be able to receive the pilot?
The document is written in a way where as long, so long as GVSU is, owns homes and is leasing them, and there's revenue, they'll pay the pilot, and that money will be available to the Noble Neighborhood.
And it will be now the same amount each year?
It'll change every year.
It will, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Commissioner, anything to add?
Nope.
All right, any other questions, Commissioners? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
It carries. Thank you, Eric. Thank you for your work on this, by the way. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving operational and data management protocols for Grand Rapids Fire Department unmanned aerial vehicle program, AKA drones.
So moved.
All right. Chief, so we, again, this is an issue that we've all been aware of for some time. We had a public hearing, and the chief has really led the charge on this. Chief, you want to fill us in on anything that we may not know?
At this point, there's really, I don't think anything that you don't know. We've worked closely with legal. I believe that our policies and our SOGs are all tuned up to the point where we really need to be. We're still awaiting one more document of approval through the FAA, but once we have that in hand, and we expect that very shortly, we'll be really ready to go. We will be moving forward if this is a successful ask today on approving this resolution for a budget substitution memo asking for $20,000 of remaining FY '17 capital, so that we can help to fund that program, that new program. But basically, I think we were successful in our public hearing, and we'd ask for your approval of this resolution.
Great. And Chief, just one thing I think to highlight, I know you've been in conversations about how this could be a regional asset, part of our automatic aid. You want to touch on that in conversations you've had with other chiefs in the area?
Sure, just that we do have mutual aid agreements with a lot of our surrounding departments, and so, and as well as our technical rescue teams that are able to assist other organizations. So this asset would be, would go along with that. But again, the bulk of what our policy decisions and our SOGs are what we would mandate being used outside the city as well. And so all of the recording and everything else that goes along with this program would be very strictly adhered to as per our own policy.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments about this? Commissioner?
Just that recently, we've seen fires, not only here, but in Rockford, where this would have been employed to great use. I think about the corner bar up in Rockford, where the police chief, or the fire chief was even quoted saying, this might flare up at any moment. So to have the ability to not go in there with people, but aerrily monitor it, and then we had a really bad fire down on South Division, where total loss on one building, and the whole roof had collapsed. So again, had firefighters been in the building when that happened, we would have had injury or loss of life, but something like this could have certainly, so.
And specifically to that point, more than necessarily using this as a fire attack tool, more towards the end of the investigation portion, where we had a structure that was compromised, and we wouldn't necessarily put people inside, but the ability for this drone to go in, take video footage, look, and determine things that we wouldn't necessarily be able to see is a very important tool.
Yeah. Good point, Commissioner, and two really good examples. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, now that will take us to our last resolution, and this is a resolution approving an investment to address specific trees identified in the Priority One Plan A3. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. And our Parks Director. So we have our Parks Director, David Marquardt, and then also our Forester, Joe Sulak, here, and I'll turn it to you, David.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. On June 5th of this year, ArborPro recently completed a comprehensive study, a tree inventory of our public trees across the city of Grand Rapids, that included roughly 85,000 trees within the public rights of way and other public parcels across the city. As a part of that inventory, roughly just over 1,500 of those trees were identified as Priority One or High-Priority Trees for removal, and about the same number, 1,400, 1,500 of those trees were identified for High-Priority or Priority One pruning. A team of us, including Tom Almonte, Jeff Dode, Joe Sulak, our Parks Superintendent, and our city forester, Dan Coy, came together to wrestle with this challenge and to put together some solutions as to how we might begin addressing this problem, and completed an A3, that is a part of your packets today that you've had a chance to review. And the recommendations coming from that A3 that have been endorsed by the city's Urban Forest Committee include roughly $2.4 million investment in this work to accelerate getting this done as quickly as possible. The funding sources identified as a part of that A3 process include the city's insurance fund, our major streets fund, Vital Streets, the Parks and Recreation Emerald Ash Bore funding source, using the refuse fund, and general operating fund contingency, all in for roughly $2.4 million. This leaves work to be studied as a part of next year's budgeting process to identify and address those Priority Two trees and how we might begin doing that, and that will be another A3 that we work on after this point and moving forward as a part of our fiscal year '19 budgeting process. And then in addition to this, I think it's important to note that as we're beginning to remove trees and prune these important Priority One trees across the city, we're also working with local nurseries and the community to identify ways in which we can make it easy for homeowners to continue planting trees in our rights of way and continue planting trees on their private property to continue helping us reach that canopy goal that we have here in the city of Grand Rapids. This is high-priority work, and I think it's important to note that roughly 25% of the work will be done by our Parks Forestry staff, and then 75% would be done by a contractor, again, to accelerate the pace at which we can complete this work.
Great, thanks. Joe, anything you want to add?
Just that this process has actually been going on for quite a while, with the previous commissions approving the tree inventory, which gave us this information, and then also with the Urban Forest Committee pushing so hard on making sure that our trees are cared for. So I appreciate the attention and appreciate the opportunity to resolve this issue.
Yeah, thank you. And a few other points why this is being, is more of an urgent issue, I'd say now, than in the past. We've had some significant storms, where we've had significant damage from trees, which is creating an increase in liability. But then also, we have thousands of maple trees that are dying, not for any other reason than that they've lived their long life, that they tend to have a lifespan of about 50 years. And just over 50 years ago, we planted a whole lot of them right about the same time, and that's coming to bear. So again, this is the natural progression, but it has brought us to a point where we have, as you can see from the report, some high-risk trees out there that potentially could be a safety issue. So Commissioner Kelly, you want to comment? You serve on our Urban Forest Committee, and then I'll turn to Commissioner Lanier.
Well, I first want to thank the team, Tom Almonte, thank you for leading this, and David and Joe, and I see Dan Coy, our forester in the back, and of course, our Urban Forestry Committee, that's had their eye on this for some time. I'm really pleased to see this happen, of course, because of, you know, safety issues primarily. And just wanted to mention, too, that this is part of a, first of all, the investment in the inventory is now paying off, so that we can really look at asset management with our trees. So if we didn't have that in place originally, we would not have had the data to make good decisions. It's really on the path to maintenance. What we wanted to do back when Tyler Stevenson was here, as you recall, we began to look at how we would do routine pruning throughout the city. But before we can get to that place, we need to take care of these trees that are dead or dying, and then those that need pruning, and then we will get to a place where we will do routine maintenance, and we hopefully won't even get a lot of calls through 311 asking for their trees to be trimmed, because we will be doing it routinely. But we're on the path, we'll get there soon, and this will also help, I think, support our customer service program. We don't want people to be waiting for months and months, so this is really good, and hopefully we can advertise this a bit, maybe get it in our WeRGR, so people know this progression and that the path we're moving on to get to routine maintenance. So thank you so much for your work.
Thanks. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, thank you, Tom, and Joe, and David, for bringing this forward. I think it will probably decrease the number of complaints that we're receiving directly from constituents, so I'm glad to see that you quickly put together an A3 to come up with a way to resolve this reoccurring issue. I am curious, because you mentioned that 75% of the work will be done by contractors, and because it's so much work, I'm wondering how you're going about recruiting contractors? Are you looking to increase the number of contractors that we already have on the books to be able to do the work? Do you think you have enough existing contractors that can take on this work, and how can we help to spread the word? Maybe this is an opportunity to do that now, to try and recruit additional contractors who may have the skills that you're looking for.
Yeah, and I would add to that, too. I wonder how many, are we working with any minority-owned contractors right now?
Mayor, I can answer that.
Commissioner Allen has the answers.
So after the A3 was presented to us a couple days ago, I reached out to Amy Maron, who heads up our purchasing department, and we met again this morning on this, because it's $2.1 million worth of contract work. So when, this is all about, in our equity initiative, this is a lot of leverage we could use to support a lot of local businesses, but at the same time, they have to be able to handle the workload. Because if you look at the A3, they want the work to start in November 1, but be done by end of April, so that's a, if you do the, I've done the math, that's a lot of trees and a lot of stumps. So we are going to do an active recruitment process to get people signed up on the city's bidding list to be able to bid on this work. But what we've learned in my work over the past year-plus on the Finance Committee when it comes to purchasing, is that a lot of the, I don't want to use the word problems, but a lot of the barriers are created not by our purchasing department, by the department that's requesting the bid. So they could put so many barriers in their, in their request for a bid, that when the, it's easy to get signed up to bid, but then when you open the bid, you're like, oh my goodness, I got to be a rocket scientist to figure this out. So we'll be working closely with Joe and his department to make sure that, you got to be licensed, you got to be bonded, you got to be insured, you have to have experience. This can't be some newly-started business that you've never taken a tree down before, you know, with references, and the scope of work needs to be clearly defined. But beyond that, we don't want to add a bunch of added barriers that would limit smaller business to take on, you know, portions of these, because it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck approach. So I've already got a list of businesses that I've been forwarding to Amy, and we're trying to really ramp that up, because we want to get this done quickly, but we also want to make sure the leverage happens. So we're working on it.
Thank you.
So what's the robust approach? So I think that's great, Commissioner Allen, that you have a list, but I'm wondering how can the public itself, you know, actually opt in on their own that you may not be aware of? I don't want us to limit, you know, as we're recruiting robustly, I don't want us to forget about an audience who we may not have any idea that they exist. So how do we go about doing that?
They can contact 311.
Okay.
Or they can call Amy Maron at our purchasing office, and they'll be happy to sign them up.
Thank you.
And then Commissioner Schaefer, and then I'll let Joe weigh in on this, too, because I know he's done a lot of work, not just in, with contractors, but also has taken the lead on working with Wedgewood and others to look at youth employment and the youth programs that teach young people how to do landscape being and things like that, so.
You should let Joe answer, because I'm on a whole different subject.
Oh, okay, all right. Joe, you want to, you want to comment on the contractor question?
Sure. What I can say is that we're doing it on two levels, like toward what Commissioner Allen commented on, but also we're breaking the number of trees up into multiple bid items, so that they're smaller, so we're not looking at four, you know, 4,000 trees for one contractor. I can say, in terms of the tree industry, things slow down in the winter. So we, I have been talking with a number of large-scale companies and local companies as well to see where their, where their interest lays on this, and we do have quite a bit of interest in this contract. So I feel that with multiple contractors, we'll be able to handle it.
Great, thank you for that, and you clean up quite well, Joe.
He's adaptable, adaptable. All right, Commissioner Schaefer?
Right, and thank you, thank you all for your work on this. I know that when you, when you look at the number of calls, as that staggering graph goes up, we all know we've received a number of calls and want to do it. So, you know, where I'm at, I looked through the funding source here, and I look back to the manager, and I think I'm back in 2012, when we tried to figure out what, where do we put holes and plug holes from a budget to really identify a core, core service, an asset that we have. And so, you know, I think it's fair to say that this is probably one that we should have addressed a little bit earlier in our process of asset management, just overall, and I'm talking about from a funding source, from our perspective. So I wanted to talk through that, that kind of next phase. Do you see this as being able to get us over that hump? What's beyond this? I guess we have 2.4, you know, today, but where we're getting this? I guess, we have 2.4, you know, today, but where we're getting that from is from our insurance fund, which makes sense. But we're also, you know, in a small way, deferring payment from the refuse fund back from what they owed five years ago. So, there's, I'm supportive of getting us here now, but I want to make sure that we're sustainably setting aside for what is an asset of ours going forward. So, maybe the manager can speak to that one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And the manager knows that this is a priority to figure out, how do we address the urgent need at hand, but also come up with a long-term sustainable plan? So, I don't, City Manager, you want to talk about that?
I do. I think, Commissioner, you're making an astute observation about the number of funding resources here that are coming together to apply to this critical need. Unfortunately, this is not the extent of our need. There is significant need beyond this. This is an asset class that has been ignored up until this point largely, and I think it's time that we look at how we can sustainably, and that's the key, not get over the hump, not just make some things look nice, but that we can sustainably manage 85,000 trees in the city. In fact, we hope to have 10,000 more than that. So, we'll be approaching 100,000 trees. How can we do that and afford it within the city's General Operating Fund? And so, I'm saying, we figured out a creative way to do Phase One and get over the hump, and what we really need to understand better is the process of moving from this risk mitigation approach to one of sustainability, and how we can fund that over a number of years. And so, that is what staff is currently working on. As I met with the mayor this morning, I discussed, I want to ensure that I bring forward to you a sustainable plan before I leave, on how we can fund this in the future. But it's going to be a huge issue for you. I'm not trying to minimize it. Trying to find $2.6 million out of our budget next year or the year after will not be easy.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you both for your work on this. All right, Commissioners, before I call the question for executive session, I also just want to give a shout out to all of the city staff who came out and joined us on Saturday for the river cleanup. Grand River Cleanup was last Saturday. Did that in partnership with our colleagues in Walker in Wyoming and Granville. And we had well over 1,000 volunteers out in force, cleaning up our river. We added on catch basins, because we want to prevent the garbage from getting into the river in the first place. So, I had the joy of cleaning up catch basins, ran into Commissioner Allen, I was in his neighborhood. But we also had an incredible team from the city. So, a lot of city employees stepped up and volunteered, and so I want to just give a shout out to them, but also the, really, 1,000, it was well over 1,000 volunteers who came up, came out, spent the entire morning cleaning up garbage, removing tons of trash from our beautiful river, and I just want to say thank you to them. So, with that, Commissioners, we have two executive sessions. One is regarding pending litigation and property acquisition, and then another is to review an appointed official's performance and performance objectives. This is a voice call vote, so all those, and I'll start down here. To go into executive session, Commissioner O'Connor?
Do we need to move it?
Oh, do we need to move it? Yes. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Move.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. All right, so Commissioners, we'll go down to sixth floor, and into the Attorney's Office.